Hello. This is the first time I've seen you. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so glad you're here. I'm so happy to see you. If we can, let's go ahead and call the meeting in order. This is a regular council meeting, July 19th, 2012. If you would please, I'd first like to welcome everyone here because we do have a full house here. And we're trying to move forward as quickly as we can. But anyway, if you would, please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing standing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the rain that you've given to us lately. And we thank you for each day that you do give to us. We ask that you be with us tonight and help us make important decisions that we will have to make concerning our city and what we do in the next year. All these things we pray. We're in a very... I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I would like to introduce to you someone who is new to our city government. And we're extremely proud to have him with us. And that's Chief Robert Merchant, our new police chief back there. He's off to a great start. I think we all want to extend a warm welcome to the City of Canton to Chief Merchant. And tell him we are grateful that he accepted our offer and decided to come to the City of Canton because he's got a tremendous resume. And I think he's already doing a great job. And I look forward to continuing working with him. So, thank you, Chief. We appreciate you being here tonight. Okay, I will entertain a motion of consideration to approve the agenda. Have a second. Okay, any other discussion? If not, those who favor seats are finally saying aye. Aye. Close to. All members voting for the motion. Yes. The... Professor Fire Law. I always have to leave when you get around to turn the thing on the library or the halls or whatever. And Mr. Cummins has a real good one there, you know. His ringtone is really quite exciting. So, we... We will move right into our 10-minute public input period, which is probably going to last longer than 10 minutes. But we will begin. We do have quite a number of people who would like to speak here. And we will sort of take this in the order that they are listed here. And John Rust is number one. Mr. Rust? I would ask, when you do come up, and try to state your case and be as brief as possible, since we do have this meeting, get to the point. And, you know, two, three minutes, hopefully at the most, that's still a long time to get through this list. But just be as concise and clear as you possibly can. Mr. Rust?
Mr. Mayor and Council, there's an item on tonight's agenda with my name in it regarding the previous question asked at City Council. The question which I asked was never my question, but that of Councilman Cummins regarding the payment for personal property damages past the water meter. He asked if there were any payments, not, I can't, any payments, how many and how many denials of residents' requests for payment of damages past the meter. The tape of that meeting, I wasn't at the meeting, I watched it, and I noticed that Jack Goodwin turned to Scott and said, "We know of one." Okay. The question was, however, never answered. And I previously asked for an answer. I never asked the question. I'm just trying to figure out if there is any exceptions and what they are. I'm not looking for anything for myself. I had a problem. Manny wanted to resolve it with me. I said, "Hey, it's water under the dam, whatever." That's a bad pun, but I don't want anything for it. In this Tuesday's recorded budget meeting, I wasn't there for six hours with that meeting either, but I did watch. Mr. Wood apparently tried to answer this three-word question by giving the names of the only two times this payment exception has occurred. In Tuesday's budget meeting, Mr. Wood said, "One was the home at the top of the hill behind Trumee Patrick State Farm office. The other was a home with Sylvia Roberts." I personally know about the one behind State Farm last fall that was fixed. And it wasn't State Farm's, it was a house up on the top end. Today, Nathan Ingram provided me with details about the neighbor of Jack Goodwin, Mrs. Roberts, who had a problem with a sprinkler head that the city had damaged last month. It was repaired by the city at no cost to the resident. So, those are the two in question. I now have a simple question. Shouldn't take a long time for Mr. Wood to answer. Are these the only two? I'm going to ask that question. I can't ask you directly, but please answer this question. Thank you in advance for your answer. And Jack, are either of the two I just mentioned, the one you were referring to several weeks ago, when you said to Mr. Wood, "We know of one"? Also, please answer the question. And again, thank you in advance for answering it. Mr. Mayor, since I cannot address you and Mr. Wood and Mr. Goodwin directly, please ask them these questions. I will repeat the questions if they wish and wait for their answers. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Any one of you want to answer the question, respond? My question was, I mean, naturally, I don't know of any.
Oh, not of any.
How about a payment past the meter? I was just asking if there was any payments for damages past the meter, the resident's water meter, the end of the one. Not. Something has come to my attention that shows that both Mr. Wood and Mr. Goodwin should know about a transaction that did occur because both of them are parties to the same transaction. I'd like to present all three of you, Mr. Mayor and both Mr. Wood and Mr. Goodwin. The information that I have that shows something, the conference.
Thank you, Mr. Rust. The next item is Andy Bonner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Andy Bonner, and I'm a Canton resident. I'm here tonight to oppose the fire district ordinance. According to my calculations, approximately 40% of the current property tax assessment is already allocated to fire protection for the city. Now, moving that portion out of the property tax and calling it a fire district tax that no longer qualifies for the senior citizen tax exemption. Even on a modest home, this fire district tax could add $300 or more to the property tax bill that some seniors already paid. More importantly, this would be an unfair new tax burden on seniors who have now, up to now, been exempt from the City of Canton taxes since a referendum to grant senior citizens in Canton a property tax exemption was passed by 90% of the Canton voters in 2001. To negate a majority vote like that with one stroke of the pen is simply wrong. Since we already have a portion of our city taxes allocated for fire protection, I see that the proposed fire district only as a means to collect taxes from senior citizens. If the city needs more funds allocated from city property taxes for fire services, why not increase the small difference between the 2.88 currently allocated to the 3.129 needed from the city property taxes collected, even if it means adjusting the mortgage rate slightly? This way, the seniors who have already been paying city property taxes will pay a bit more. But the seniors living in very modest homes who have been totally exempt from city property taxes will either continue to be exempt or pay just a small amount of property tax. Please be fair to our elderly citizens. I urge you to vote against this ordinance tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any great analysis of budget made in a tented ways like? In my opinion, maybe the long range is good night. My name is Andy Alexander. I'm an extended Canton resident. I want to comment on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2013. This budget was open to the general public. I'm disappointed not many people showed up. For the past three years, I've had the opportunity to attend and comment on proposed budgets. Altogether, I spent something like nine hours listening to the City Council, City Manager, the Mayor, Chief Financial Officer, going over, line out this detailed budget, which is something like 70 pages. This was a long, boreous process, time-consuming, of this council. They delivered very... religiously, use a better word. They labor very hard and come up with right decisions for this city. Let me say, Mr. Mayor, that my previous employment with state and federal government over many years gave me the opportunity to look at local entity budgets during the time. This experience gave me credible confidence when reviewing budgets. So, I want to make it clear, I'm used to looking at budgets just to walk in off the Mr. Mayor, I want to compliment you, the council members, the City Manager, the Chief Financial Officer, for doing an excellent job in putting forth a comprehensive city budget. I know for the fact that all of you discussed these issues line out in the line out, time-consuming, to do this. And doing so, you, as council members, had to make many, many choices, tough choices, whether cut expenses and probably raise some revenue to meet the needs of the city. I believe that your process that you done served in certain best interest of this city. That is my firm belief that after reviewing this proposal with this council member over some eight hours or six hours, whatever, that the proposed budget for 2013 accomplished this task. This task was in the best interest of all taxpayers in the city. Not to select you, but to all the citizens. And that's important. That's what this council is about. Fast of taxes and budgets to benefit all the citizens, not just the special interests of groups. I know to some seniors that own property may not like having to pay for adequate fire protection and all that. There are some things you can cut in a budget. And this city council then makes some severe cuts. But not having an adequate fire department for this city is unacceptable. All of you, all of us, had to pay our fair share in meeting our obligations for a fire department that we all need to protect our property. Let me say this. To have an adequate, maintain an adequate fire department in this city, there's no free rides. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. James, the...
The Postwood, so, the area of the city.
Sure. They need this.
Mr. James.
I'm Joe Cossia, I live in River Green. I'm in support of the fire district for the city of Canton, having the city maintain its own fire department as opposed to other alternatives like combining with the county. The county coming into the city doesn't give us anything. They, in fact, they take from us millions of dollars worth of equipment and they have a lower fire rating than we have in the city, and I think it serves the community best to have that maintained as an independent entity. And my feeling is that the increase in taxes, as was stated just before, we have to pay our fair share, quite frankly. You can see by the number of calls that the seniors in this town get a lot of good service from our existing fire department, and I'd like to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Herb Alford.
I'm Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Herb Alford, I live in Great Sky. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your hard work and for all the time I know you spend on this council, doing the business in the city. And I know it's a lot of time and a lot of hard work, and we really want to thank you for that. I know you're trying to do the best you can for Canton. From my point of view, it doesn't really matter who provides our fire service, as long as our existing service is as good or better than it is today. And the fire service is at its lowest possible cost to us people. We already pay taxes to the city and to the county, so it doesn't matter to me to I pay the taxes to them. With that being said, my question is, have you made a financial comparison, the council, between the county fire service and the city fire service for the next ten to twenty years? If so, will you share it with us? And if not, will you tell us why you already decided against the county service? And I'd like to also know why you're ready to vote a tax increase on the people of Canton when you do not have a plan or any idea of potential cost to the people of the city? Many seniors moved into Canton because they had a senior exemption. And I think they've paid taxes all their life. And I just know one thing for sure about people that collect taxes. It never ends. They get their hand in your pocket and it goes deeper and deeper and deeper. So you have to find it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight is a night of the ordinance that I have been in support of that culminates after six long weeks of written literature and of correspondence to and from the city. And I would ask that my four of one councilman, the honorable and respectable Bucky Huffman, and the honorable and respectable Bob Rush have the courage to call for the motion and second the motion to help propel this ordinance into reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Which order?
Ann Casey and I live in Soleil. I'll talk to you about the tax district. And I think we can break this into two issues really. There's the fire services and then there's the senior tax exemption. Just a few comments on what I've heard here so far. I think that all seniors want adequate fire protection, and I think everyone in this room is willing to pay for it. The thing that I see first of all in this, in this proposal is there is no adequate protection in this proposal. There's no plan, as was also stated. The figures that I've heard are nine hundred thousand dollars to build a fire station, seven fifty to run one for a year, and we need two of them. If we generate four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in taxes a year, I don't see how this equation will ever close, gentlemen. You can't build a stations and you certainly can't operate them. If you could operate two stations for a million and a half a year and you have four thirty-six coming in, I just don't see how it's going to work. I hope you can make it work, and I don't see it. If you raise the millage rate, I know you had six hundred and thirty thousand, I've been told possibly, in a year, you still can't afford one station, just the operating cost. So the first thing I'd ask you to do is close this equation. Figure out how we're going to have adequate fire station or fire support. That's number one. Another thing that comes in here, of course, is the, is a senior tax exemption. And we've looked at my own bill. If under this proposal, my current bill, I think, is four hundred and five dollars a year, it would go up three sixty-five, that's ninety percent. Seems a little hefty to me, okay? And if you raise the millage rate further, it's going to go higher. I think that there's other ways to tax the people. You can raise the millage rate, as I think Andy Bonner mentioned. You can also charge a fee for fire services and just make it fifty bucks for household. It's a little higher for non seniors, it's a whole lot less for seniors, it's a whole lot more plausible, I think. It's not quite that simple, you have to charge for commercial properties and so forth, and I get that. And I'm sure I don't know the whole story, okay? But there are other ways to do it. Even if you go to the county, you could potentially subcontract services to the county, maintain fire services through the city nominally, if you will, charge your residents, including keeping the senior tax exemption if you chose to, and then have the county provide the services. It's another option. They might or may not like Brian, but something needs to be looked at. And I would ask that you just look at all the options, figure out the one that closes the equation first of all, that gives us adequate protection, and then figure out where we're going to get the money from. Now, as far as the senior exemptions in, in particular, just some general comments. I think Mr. Brian mentioned at the last meeting, we just want to charge everybody further, everybody should pay their own fair share. And I think everybody agrees with that. But we're looking at one element of cost in the city. I would suggest to you that exemptions like this are based on cost, benefit, and need. And I'll just give you a few examples and try and keep it in that. But on the cost basis, seniors use more fire protection in EMTs. We also use less police, I think. I didn't call police or fire. Once in nineteen seventy-seven, my daughter split her head and needed two stitches, that was the last time. So, you know, those are the cost kinds of things that you get in there. When you get into benefits, seniors give their money to local charities, many of them. They give their time to lots of things, including the Canton Police Department and the city council, okay? Seniors as a group are probably the biggest supporters of Canton Restaurants and Home Services, those kinds of businesses. I know people who go to dinner out seven days a week and half, half a week for lunch, okay? You couldn't do that. I couldn't do it when I was thirty-five, I don't know about you guys. I couldn't even afford to babysit, let alone go there. So there's a lot of imbalances there. There's also a neat question. Senior citizens are either on a... Senior citizens are either on a fixed income or they will be sick, okay? I'm not yet, I've made another year and a half or so, and then I'm going to have to live off social security pension and my investments, right? So there is a need. And when I bought my home here in two thousand and seven, I looked at the tax structure, and that was a big part of my decision to come out here. It wasn't just the money, it was also the feeling of community, because I was in East Cobb for twenty-eight years. Cobb County, in my opinion, was extremely well-run, the prices, you know, for taxes were reasonable, and they had a better senior exemption than here. So when I looked at moving, I said, you know what, Cherokee and Canton, they're the new Cobb County. That's where I want to be. It just felt like home, and that's why I came here. You know, you got to take that with you, just saying, okay? Now, the other thing here is people look at the senior exemption and say, these guys are getting a deal, nobody else gets it, okay? Not true. Look at this. We build ballfields for our youth, soccer fields, we have a track in Heritage Park for walkers, we have a victory garden, we have playground equipment in Heritage Park for the little kids, okay? Churches in Canton don't pay any taxes, all right? These are all special interest groups. Do they deserve these things? Absolutely. Should I pay for those things? Absolutely, okay? So ask me to pay my fair share of the global costs, but don't pick one little cost here and say, you got to pay your fair share of this, because I'm going to come back and say, okay, I don't have any kids playing soccer, guys, you know? So let's look at the global picture, is all I ask there. Then I'd just finish up and say, go back to what I think Andy Bonner mentioned too. If you look at the referendum that passed this senior tax exemption, ninety percent, ninety-seven percent, I believe, was said last time I was here, of voters voted for this exemption. Now, the city's changed a lot since then, it's, I think, four times as big and the makeup of the city is much different. But it is the last mandate that you got from your constituents. And I look at this and I say, they determined what was fair taxation, and they included the senior exemption. So those citizens said that senior citizens are right now paying their fair share. That's the first thing I'd ask you to consider. The other thing is you have the legal ability, I guess, to, to gut this, and I'm sorry, but that's the only word I can think of. You have the legal ability to do it, but do you have the moral right to do it, gentlemen? I don't think you do. I think you should stand up, put your head up, and if you're going to take away this exemption, put it to referendum and let the citizens tell you once again what they want to do. Thank you.
Stan Oliver.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm not going to cover the, the village stuff that they're talking about, because that's been covered by these other people very well. I just got a very simple question that, that I don't understand, is according to the way we're understanding, we're going to create a fire district. Is that correct? And I'd like to, wish somebody would tell me what a fire district is in the city of Canton. Canton is already a fire district. It's a city camp, a camp that has its own fire department, its own responsibilities, controlled by the city, controlled by the budget of the city. So how do we create a fire district within a fire district? That's what I don't understand. I just don't get it. I've had thirty years of fire service, and I've never heard anything like that before. We have fire district there all the, unincorporated areas in the county, or in my case, the parish. So I just don't understand what you mean by a fire district. If we're going to have a village increase, let's call it that. Let's not try to hide it in a fire district so we can get everybody. That's, that's all I, thank you very much.
Thank you. Valerie. Valerie Oliver.
I'm in the council, I'm, I want to talk about something different. Resolution, we were talking in the newspaper about a possible resolution this evening about the T-Slash. And so I wasn't even going to attend the meeting, I was away. What are these fellows thinking? So I, I just would like to say a few things about the T-Slash. T-Slash is the largest tax increase in Georgia history. The A R C states it will have very little effect on traffic congestion. Fifty-two percent of the T-Slash funds will be to build new mass transit and rail systems. Five percent of the population uses it now and ridership is down. And MARTA is a smaller percent, very small percentage, don't have. MARTA is eighty percent subsidized and has a very large debt. It provides for only part of this T-Slash, provides for only funds to complete some of the contracts. A R C has no answer for how operations and maintenance will be paid for. This T-Slash adds another layer of bureaucracy. If small, if seven small counties vote against, vote against it, and the three largest counties vote for it, we will be outvoted. Georgia D O T is sitting on one point two billion dollars, or an increase in a single year of thirty-one percent. And of course, you all know about Georgia four hundred. Of course, Deale said in the papers today that somehow they were really going to do something about it by the first of next year. Okay. In two thousand and ten, the D O T had voted to keep collecting tools and four hundred thousand dollar bonds paid for. Now, that's what we talked about, and we talked about bureaucracy. I also heard that we will be penalized if we do not build cars. In this T-Slash, millions is spent on stuff that has nothing to do with transportation or money that has no stated use. Mr. Beach, who was on the Neo-Cup D Commission and is running against Mr. Rogers, stated that the project list is terrible, and he did this at a debate with Mr. Rogers. Chip Rogers states it does little to alleviate traffic, he's been in the news several times talking about it. John Jurison says the project list is well, not well thought out, with some projects being suspect and possibly illegal. And the mayor of Holly Springs also talked negatively about it at the Republican Women's Forum on the T-Slash. Canton has financial problems. And the city of Cherokee, under our county of Cherokee, is also talking about needing more money. I cannot see us being for bad legislation.
Thank you. Steve Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I too want to express my, my thoughts and opinion relative to creating a fire district. First, this council and the mayor work incredibly long hours, and I don't think you get paid an awful lot of money for what it is that you do, and we are, I think most, most residents and citizens are appreciative of your effort to the fire department. I will tell you, as a former volunteer firefighter for nine years in Long Beach County, Florida, I appreciate the quality and the passion that our staff brings to this community. And I don't think it's anything about our department and the services that they provide. There's been a lot of comments made, and I think it has been shared where our concerns are. I'd just like to emphasize a couple of things. Number one, when I decided to move here six years ago, I'd ridden Soleil. I had made a conscious effort, and I was only going to move to a community that had senior tax exemption. And when I finally made it to sixty-two, I was pretty excited to come to this area and have benefit of real estate tax exemption. I thought in the history of our country, I don't get into any kind of philosophy, taxation without representation was done away with a few years ago. And I think what troubles me more than anything else is, and I know we've been working on this for two and a half years, but you are, you're working for your citizens. Why wasn't their town hall meetings called so that many of us would have the opportunity to truly understand what you're trying to accomplish and what the pros and cons are? And I understand, and I may be wrong, that if nothing happens today, A, our fire rating remains the same, I think it's a category four, B, our insurance doesn't change, C, if it was a merger with the county, we would probably be affected. And the other question I ask is, those of us that moved into Soleil, formerly an athletic community, two million dollars was given to this city to provide fire service and additional stations. Now, I know that two million dollars doesn't exist, and many of you weren't around when that happened, but in today's day and age, I sincerely think that raising taxes, in my case, it's ninety percent increase also, I'd probably come up with the extra dollars. But from the local, the state, and the federal level, voters are, are so upset and angry with our elected representatives who constantly want to find additional dollars when they haven't been able to manage what they already have. I wish you luck.
Thank you. Phil Cornell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. That's a tough act to follow. I'm trying to come up with something. I'm, I'm in definite opposition to the fire district ordinance. I guess I have to ask the question, would the ordinance even be necessary if you deleted the words relating to the exemption? I read it on your website, and I don't see anything in there with that single phrase, no exemptions applied, that does anything much. So why not call a spade a spade and stop beating around the... No, stop, stop trying to run this past us, a sheep or wolf in sheep's clothing? Why? I'd say, throw it out. thousand dollars by approximately three hundred and fifty dollars per year. Forgetting for a moment about the homes valued at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars or above, let's talk about the less fortunate. Fact, in Canton, according to the two thousand and ten census, about six point six percent of families and eleven point two percent of the population were below the poverty line, including seventeen point four percent of those aged sixty-five or over. As the council considered what this will do to those seniors that are just making ends meet, living on a meager social security income with homes valued under two hundred thousand dollars, these individuals, and there are many, must now come up with as much as an additional two hundred and fifty dollars a year for the fire district. Do these folks reduce their food consumption or reduce their medications to pay for this additional tax? Or do they let the city kick them out of homes that many have lived in for up to fifty years because they could not afford this additional fire district tax? Several months back, I spoke before the council and mayor when the topic of senior exemption was on the agenda. At that time, the council and mayor overwhelmingly supported the continuance of the senior exemption. It now appears to me that this move to create a fire district is only being implemented to reverse that decision by reducing the exemption by over forty-five percent and adding a tax burden to those seniors that can least afford it. Councilmen, why the sudden change of heart? I thank the Honorable Mayor Hopgood and Councilman Cummings for standing with the seniors and hope the other councilmen will reconsider their position. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have no prepared statement to make, but I would just like to plant a thought in your mind before you vote. Senior citizens don't have the same options as younger people. An increase in any taxation for the younger person, he has options. He can negotiate a pay raise. He can change jobs to better paying jobs. The senior citizen can't do that, especially if he's like me, crowding eighty. Fortunately, through fifty years of hard work and wise use of my funds, this little tax won't bother me in the least. But I would ask you, when you vote, think about the people that Mr. Cornblum just mentioned, the widow who's living on social security alone. This increase will force her, in some cases, to have to choose between her medications, her food, and paying the taxes. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think you're attacking with any tax increase on people in that age group, you're putting a burden on them when they can least afford it. I thank you for your time.
David Grant.
I'm a resident of Great Sky. I have just a brief comment to make on the proposed new fire protection district. If your answer for funding this district is to pass a disproportionate increase on seniors, you're asking the wrong question.
Fred and Jean Kopp. Is that right? Can you repeat?
Yes. My name is Fred Kopp, I live in the Brooklyn Canton, and I just want to acknowledge and support the people before me that this consideration of this fire ordinance should be reconsidered in favor of these citizens.
Is this Jerry Reddale?
No, I didn't.
No? You don't want to talk? Okay. Ken Bugs? Blue? No? No? Eleanor? Chaboa?
We didn't realize what it was for before.
All right. I'll put the next one in, though. Bill McGruder?
I had no idea. Well, it was lunch, huh?
There's council, I'm Bill McGruder. I live right across the street. I think it's been pretty well said tonight. I just want to get a couple of points back that the numbers that you all have given was clear. If you're interested in an economic way, a fast way to approach the problems that we have with our fire protection, you can't go any way but to go consolidating. Now, I realize John has some sentimental kind of attachment to the city fire department. I hate to see it go, but I think you've got to look at it a practical way. There still seems to be an obsession with some about senior citizen discount, home state exemption. That is, should not be the case. When you put a new tax in, that new tax can be added to, just like the other new tax can always be added to. And I think we need to forget about fire districts and look at consolidation. But I like the idea, let's have a plan, some kind of plan. Also, this gentleman talked about what good volunteers and seniors are. Let me put in a word for it. The Canton Main Street Committee could always use some volunteers.
Wayne Rogers.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, residents, my name is Wayne Rogers and I'm a resident of Solely at Laurel Canyon. And I'm here to oppose the new fire district ordinance and the increase in taxes. This is my first year to qualify for exemption. In the paper this morning, it says during this previous meeting, the council asked city manager Scott Wood to work with council member John Versford and Jack Goodwood to come up with a five-year plan outlining the city's fire service needs, which would be considered at a future meeting. I don't know if there's a timetable on that, but I think that would be a good plan to implement. I understand that the only thing that implementing the fire district allows the city to do that it cannot already do is tax the seniors. That's all. So I urge, I urge you to vote against this ordinance. It seems to be a continuing attack on seniors. From the Cherokee Tribune dated July eleventh, quote Mayor Gene Hopgood, setting up this special fire district is simply a scheme to do an end run around the senior exemption that was voted in years ago. It seems that only Hopgood and Cummings seem to understand that the exemption passed years ago is a promise that should be honored to the seniors in Canton and they also understand the value seniors added add to the city. And I couldn't agree more. So I urge you again to vote against this ordinance. Part of the continuing attack on seniors, as in the Cherokee Tribune dated June twenty-eighth, front page story, it says rise in property tax assessment worries senior community residents. It seems to be an attack on seniors, not only by the city, but by the county as well. And it seems to target my neighborhood. My neighborhood is part of the five percent in the entire Cherokee County area where the taxes assessment has increased this year, when home prices have been going down according to all that you hear on the news and in the papers. So I urge you again to vote against this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
And that's all we have that signed up for the ten-minute public input period. Went very well and I commend you for being brief and moving through this and we appreciate the input that each and every one of you have given here. We will move along now with item six of our agenda, consent agenda. We have on that the approval of the July fifth, two thousand and twelve minutes, the approval of the ordinance to delete prohibition against the eyes of city parks, which, you know, sounds bad, but that's to conform with state law, approval of reservoir launch site lease, and the approval of the leases for the vacant lot at East Main and Church Street. This is where the old drugstore burned, as most of you know, and we are going to lease that for, be able to clean it up and use it for a little bit of mini amphitheater or something of that sort anyway. So it'll look much better, give it a defense and all that around it. So the Main Street group is going to be working with that. So those are the items. Are there any of those items you would like to remove from the consent agenda? I guess you have a motion in a second to approve any other discussion. If not, those who favor signify the same eye. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Under whole bill, whole business, discussion of responses to public input inquiries, Mr. Russ spoke earlier. Is there anything to add to that, Mr.? City manager is actually not here right now, so anything else to add, I guess. He'll do that when he comes back. The second item, Bruce Nagel requested a refund on the irrigation meter that he purchased prior to the price decrease on June twenty-first. We actually lowered the price of the irrigation meter, I believe it was from like nine twenty-five down to seven fifty. And Mr. Nagel, I believe, had purchased one sometime prior to that date and I think the council has talked about that a little bit. Do we have a motion, I believe we had, either to deny or to amend?
I think in discussions, we decided that the policy had been in the past that anything that was voted on by council or adopted by council became effective as of the time of adoption or at the time of vote. So there'd be no retroactive in any case.
Okay. Is that the consensus of this board that, okay, that we would not amend the policy in any way there, that it would pretty much be, since it was effective upon the adoption of the council, that that would be the cutoff date? All right. Item three, Elaine Wood, the request that the city fund a porta potty for the Canton Community Victory Garden East. And I believe we have, we have someone here from Home Depot, maybe?
Yes.
And we, thank you for being here, Marcel. And I believe Roy Taylor's here. I believe Elaine may be out of town or something, so.
We do have some other garden supporters here.
Yes, you do. I'm going to, it's a great, it's a great place. If you haven't been to the community garden, you need to take a look at it. It's really good and it's run really well. But the idea that we have a motion or what's your pleasure on funding a porta potty for the Canton Community Victory Garden East, I believe, I believe she said something around five or six hundred dollars a year, about six hundred dollars a year?
Mayor, I think we have the porta potties that are due at the disposal site. It's around six hundred dollars a year. The only thing I would ask is have we, do we have flexibility in the budget to take care of that?
We've got in the budget appropriation for a permanent new restroom facility right over here at Brown Park. If that comes about, if we can get that achieved, then we've got one that they have, so I'm not concerned. It's right in front of City Hall. Yes. The question is, that is kind of out by itself, sitting up there under the water tower. If there's damage to that porta potty, are we responsible for that or? No, so we would not act it on it. We would rent it on a monthly basis. And it would, I guess, probably be sitting, hopefully be inside the fence. It is fenced in up there. While they have had, I don't think they have a lock on the gate now, but that certainly could be something that could, I don't know if it's still one of those things over here. Do we have a motion regarding this? Have a motion in seconds to approve this. Any other discussion? If not, those who favor signify the same eye. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Discussion and approval to negotiate water and wastewater operations contract, Mr. Cummings?
I motion that Mr. Wood, utilizing the technical evaluation panel as advisors, begin negotiations with the highest-ranked firm to operate and maintain our water, wastewater facilities, distribution, and collection system. Further move, as part of the negotiations, the provision be included in any contract to be brought before council, a clause that the contracted firm will be evaluated annually as to the performance of repairs and preventative maintenance. And if such repairs and maintenance is performed satisfactorily, the contract will be automatically renewed for an additional year in the five-year contract without obtaining comparative proposals. If an unsatisfactory performance evaluation is received by the Utilities Operating Code at any of the scheduled four annual evaluations, the city of Canton will have the option of declaring the contract will expire on the anniversary date and be able to start an R F P process and solicit new proposals. A further move, that Mr. Wood direct the panel to develop a set of objective criteria to be used in the annual evaluation process. Each criteria point will be objective and measurable with some form of weighted value assigned so that an overall rating can be obtained. Mr. Wood is to be charged with the responsibility of scheduling the annual evaluations in a timely manner so that if an unsatisfactory evaluation is determined, then there will be sufficient time in which to solicit proposals from other firms and effectuate a transition prior to. And, and it would, I guess, probably be sitting, I hope it'd be inside the fence. It is fenced in up there. While they have had, I don't think they have a lock on the gate now, but that certainly could be, be something that could, I don't know if they'd still want those things over here. Do we have a motion regarding this? Have a motion and a second to approve this. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye. Those no, all members voting for the motion. Discussion and approval to negotiate water and wastewater operations contract, Mr. Cummings.
I motion that Mr. Wood, utilizing the technical evaluation panel as advisors, begin negotiations with the highest ranked firm to operate and maintain our water, wastewater facilities, distribution and collection system. Further move, as part of the negotiations, the provision be included in any contract to be brought before council, a clause that the contracted firm will be evaluated annually as to the performance of repairs and preventative maintenance. And if such repairs and maintenance is performed satisfactorily, the contract will be automatically renewed for an additional year in the five-year contract without obtaining comparative proposals. If an unsatisfactory performance evaluation is received by the Utilities Operating Code at any of the scheduled four annual evaluations, the city of Canton will have the option of declaring the contract will expire on the anniversary date and be able to start an RFP process and solicit new proposals. A further move, that Mr. Wood direct the panel to develop a set of objective criteria to be used in the annual evaluation process. Each criteria point will be objective and measurable with some form of weighted value assigned so that an overall rating can be obtained. Mr. Wood is to be charged with the responsibility of scheduling the annual evaluations in a timely manner so that if an unsatisfactory evaluation is determined, then there will be sufficient time in which to solicit proposals from other firms and effectuate a transition prior to, to the anniversary date.
Do we have a second? Motion and second. Any discussion?
I have a question I would have is that if we're going to evaluate them annually, and I think if we're going to, to give enough time to develop an RFP and get new quotes, and we have to have maybe, I would say, just annual, an annual evaluation in a 60-day period in which if the council, the city decides to negate the contract, that we give them 60 days notice that we're going to negate the contract and go out for bids. I think just arbitrarily cutting it off is not fair.
Right.
Your motion said it would be terminated a year later.
If it were terminated on the anniversary date, the evaluation would be conducted. For example, let's assume that our renewal is our number first. Let's, what I would suggest is that we'd be conducting evaluations in the March and April timeframe, and that would allow for plenty of time for the 60-day notice that be required. The reason I put that in, if I may state, is that one of the vendors has offered us a go-away clause that says, if you don't like us at any time, we can go away. So I feel that should be part of our negotiations with whoever the highest ranked firm is.
Mr. Houghman.
One part of it I think we should look at, a contract of this nature for just one year. I think that's going to up our bids because these people have to make considerable amount of capital, possibly equipment, things of this nature, personnel moves. There's a lot goes into making an effective operation. One year, if it was me, I wouldn't make a bid on it at all. I just wouldn't do it.
Mr. Bearstur.
I was just wondering if Mr. Cummings would be willing to take the input on the 60-day timeframe to add that into your motion?
Most certainly. You'd, you'd willing just to adjust the timeframe so the 60 days could be adequate.
That's good.
Any other discussion, comments?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. That's, you, you, as far as the highest rated, that's the firm that got the most points.
Whatever the panel was, the highest ranked.
The one that was, got the most points or whatever. Okay. All right.
I have some discussion here. I'm sorry, I got to talk, and I think no discussion there. I had a couple of comments.
Sure.
The, um, please speak your damn seat up. The RFP that was developed by our consulting engineer is very specific where we should go on the next step. And while I would agree with most everything that you come and say, some of it is redundant and some of it is, is, is also changing the RFP that our consulting engineer developed in our direction that, that I feel like what we should be following and the step we're at right now, paragraph 16, just says that the committee will begin to negotiate with the highest ranked firm, and that is Utility Partners, who, who is the firm that currently has our contract. So I would ask that the council just affirm to our consulting engineer and his committee of two other professional engineers and Mr. Patton to just continue with the process, negotiate the contract with U.P. If any of us as individual council members want to, to ask the committee to put certain things in, like whatever we want them to ask, they can consider it, but we have a process already in place that's been moving along. The evaluation is being done by three professional engineers and Mr. Patton, who is a professional contract negotiator. Let's leave these guys alone to just affirm, just continue doing your job, and then bring the contract back to us, just like the RFP says. At that point, we can change anything we want to. If we want to make it a one-year contract, we can do that. We can do anything we want to, but let's let the professionals work and do their job. So, so I would suggest, if this motion fails as an alternative motion, to simply affirm to our committee and our consulting engineer, keep doing what you're doing, and then sign the contract when you're, you're finished.
Number one, shouldn't be putting a second motion until the first motion.
I'm, I'm not making a second motion. I was just saying that if this motion fails.
Number two, number two, we are adhering to the RFP. The RFP says to begin negotiations. All I have done is stipulated condition to be included in the negotiations. And that, and to answer Mr. Huffman, it's where he said it would be cost prohibitive for them to negotiate one year. We are comparing these vendors based on different, not apples to apples. If one says, mine's based on five years, and the other one is saying, mine's based on a 30-day notice and I'm out of here. So all I'm saying is to get them equal, we should have the same terms of the contract, which gives them an evaluation period. If, I'm sure that if we went to one of the other vendors and said, you can remove this 30-day, I'm out of here clause or option from us, they might significantly reduce their costs, and it might be that they became the highest ranking versus this one. So we have to evaluate based on what's done right now. Whoever that highest ranking, proceed with that one, and this is a term or condition that I've motioned for the second, and I appreciate a vote on that.
Mr. Rush?
Just one, one last question. Is, is there anything in the RFP, and I, I haven't read it, which qualifies or penalizes the bidder for non-performance? Is there any place in there for evaluation and non-performance that we can say?
Where? Hold on just a second. I don't know. Who, do you know the answer to that? I, I don't know.
Mr. Hatem, you may be able to speak to that if you, if you mind.
We can ask our ass. Is there anything in the RFP that would indicate a penalty for non-performance contractor?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
There's, there's a provision for cancellation of the contract. I'm not sure if that is a penalty, but I think there's a provision for cancellation of the contract. That's probably what you do for non-performance.
I, I agree that evaluations should be done, and that's one of the reasons why in this year's, this coming year's budget, we are, and we've allocated funds for a new engineer to oversee, to inspect the work that our, who we contract with. In the past, our, our vendor has been criticized for not doing certain issues, some house cleaning issues and maintenance. Well, I feel like our, the city is somewhat at fault. If you don't inspect what you ask for, you're probably going to get less than you asked for. And that's one of the main reasons for the city going out and we're going to hire some engineer to oversee some of these because our present engineers are just entirely overworking. So that is one of the main reasons. I totally agree about evaluations. I'd like to clarify, in one of the bids that came in, there was an enormous amount of new equipment that they were going to purchase, put in. Believe me, they're not going to purchase that equipment for a one-year contract.
That happens to be the bidder, excuse me, that happens to be the bidder that isn't highest ranked, that will give us 30 days go away.
Well, they said that verbally. They haven't put it in writing.
They will.
Well, that, we'll see it when it comes in writing.
See if that's a motion after.
Well, I just want to make these comments because if, when you go out for bid for one year contracts on issues like this, where you've got a, a big learning curve, there's a cost in transitioning from one vendor to another vendor. Can you give them one year and they're out? Believe me, the next vendor is going to go way up because they don't want to do business with, on one-year contracts of this magnitude.
Mr. Bearstur.
Just to follow up a point on Mr. Huffman is, then I would hope that the company that we appoint would be qualified to do the job that we're asking them to do versus having to stand over them and watch day to day. Now, I'd ask the professional engineer, Mr. Coxler, who is our consultant, if he would put in a clause of performance in that contract. And he's working on that, and it's kind of hard because there would be some ambiguous, ambiguous statements in there, but it will be part of that contract, and, and I think that's what's a key element.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have, we have a call coming.
Question?
We have a motion and a second.
Question?
I got a question. We'll go ahead and vote on this. All those in favor of Mr.?
We called a question. We have to vote if we're going to continue discussion.
Right.
We call a motion, vote, move motion to vote immediately, which has to be voted on.
Yeah, that's right. We have, we have a motion and a second.
Move motion to vote immediately.
That's correct. End of debate.
And there's somebody seconded.
Seconded?
Called a question?
Okay.
What do you vote on that?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify the same eye?
Aye.
Those no?
No. Calling a question or what?
I believe, I believe the motion passed.
I want a roll call vote.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion? Mr. To call the question?
Yeah, the end of the debate.
No?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
No. No. Yes.
I believe there's what, three and three.
Are you going to vote?
I get to vote this time. No, we are not going to end the debate.
Not going to end the debate?
No, we're going to end the debate and approve your motion.
Or blow out the motion.
Yeah. All right. Now we're going to vote on the motion that you approved. Let's do this again.
Who's on first here?
And, and, and your motion was to, to state it simply. Don't read that whole thing again.
With the stipulated performance evaluation.
Okay. Well, it's a, it's a low point, low, hot point.
Highest ranked company.
Right.
But do we, there was a question of who, which one was.
The panel decided that.
The panel already decided.
Yeah, they already decided.
Well, they may have already decided. All right. You say the name so we don't have any.
I know, I'm thinking about the highest ranked. I want to steer.
All right.
Because it's complicated for, for, we're going to be able to get to the bridge, but.
Yes. Mr. Bearstur? Brian?
No.
Well, we got that. All right. Give me the, give me the yeses. Raise your hand. All right. So we, I'm going to vote yes as well. I love it when I get votes. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and approval of ordinance to the N S S six, Texas 146 of the Code of Georgia, Georgia, to change the minimum food requirement in licensed establishments. We have that as attachment free, attached, attachment three. And what this basically does is to reduce the food to alcohol sales requirement from 60 to 40 to 50/50 in the, throughout the city, with the exception of the downtown district, which would be amended to 40/60. Any comments?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye?
Aye.
Those no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Item D, discussion and approval. Discussion and approval of ordinance to create a fire protection district, provide for the boundaries for the fire protection district, and provide for a tax to be collected within the fire district. The tax was four. Do we have a motion, Mr. Cummings?
To open discussion, I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance for the fire district.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Aye. Any discussion? Mr. Rush?
I'll go first. The one thing I will, I will agree with, with Mr. Casey when he said there has been mismanagement of, of funds in the past, and, you know, we, we're not here to lay blame on anything, but, but that has been the case, and at least in my opinion. One thing I think most of the folks here are missing the point is that it's not a question of standing pat or a fire district. It's fire district for the city of Canton or fire district for Cherokee County. In either event, the seniors are going to be taxed. In the county, it's current, well, they're looking for 3.39. We haven't established a tax rate. The tax rate of 3129 was suggested because that was the current county fire tax rate. So the only thing I'm saying here is that I know people feel it's, it's an assault on the senior tax exemption, but that tax exemption stays the same. The property tax valuation goes down, but it's a question of, you're going to write a check for three mils. It just depends who's going to be, whose name is going to be on the check.
Anyone else have, Mr. Cummings?
Yes. If I may say, there is not a single action relative to fire services or coverage that this council cannot do already without creating a fire district, except raise taxes on seniors. Let me repeat, creation. Let me repeat, creation of a fire district does not give this council the ability to do anything it cannot already do, except raise taxes on seniors. It's just a diversionary method around the senior exemption granted in a referendum. It allows for this council to increase taxes primarily on the backs of seniors. It also increases taxes on all other property owners. The additional revenue created by having a district, as presented to me by a, a document this week from Mr. Bearstur, will actually generate about $630,000 of new taxes, of which about $289,500 will come from seniors, and the remaining $320,500 coming from other property owners. When fully implemented, the, the average senior will have new taxes of about $280. The average other resident property owner will pay about $79 more. The numbers that I reviewed from this two-page sheet are extremely, in my opinion, extremely optimistic, pie-in-the-sky estimates, and do not include all the costs related to the fire districts. The numbers double count, swag dollars. No dollars have been, have been specified for all administrative support that the fire department receives from human resources, payroll, accounts payable, and general accounting. In the financial world, these numbers are called swag. I won't say what it means. This plan, this plan will not station a single ambulance at any city fire station, and the county fire station in North Canton will probably close when the Lowell Canyon Station is operational. Where do you think the ambulance to serve Salee will come from when the hospital was relocated and the county has no station on the north side? Do you know that about two-thirds of all calls received by the department are rescue and EMS? And those seniors in pinnacle place, you will see no change in service provided. You will just get a tax bill of $160 to $200 that you do not get now. As for the downtown residents, your downtown station will be closed, and you will get service from either the south side or a new station located somewhere around Commerce Boulevard. And all the seniors in Riverstoneville, where will your service originate from? In conclusion, some members have ignored the mayor's formation of a committee, met privately, and, and leased in spirit, avoided following the open meetings law. Generators set of numbers that are incomplete and wildly optimistic, all because they believe that the end justifies the means, and they do anything possible to make sure that the fire department stays under city control. I personally do not care who controls the fire department. I cannot support a backdoor method that takes away from our seniors a benefit that the residents of this city overwhelmingly voted for in referendum or inadequate in. the residents of this city overwhelmingly voted for in referendum, or inadequate, inaccurate numbers generated to substantiate this proposed action. If a council member votes yes for this ordinance based on what I received or what was presented to me the other day, I suggest that they, when they lose a tooth, they continue to place it under their pillow, for obviously they still believe in the tooth fairy. In addition, I'd like to correct Commissioner Rush here. He has said that if it goes to the county and the city, there's no difference, it's only on the check. That is not completely true. The county has proposed giving a grandfather to all seniors so that their exemption will apply. Now, that course has to be voted on by the commissioners, but if it were, and I wasn't going to even mention this tonight, because it isn't even on my sheet, but Mr. Rush brought it up, if it was consolidated, seniors who currently reside in a house would be grandfathered into the city exemption, and only upon the sale of that house would the fire district tax and the county be levied against it. Now, that's been proposed, hasn't been voted on.
Excellent presentation, Mr. Cummings.
Direct it up here, please.
Excellent presentation, Mr. Mayor. The, the fact that these past weeks has been riddled with misinformation. And example, ambulance. The state dictates that the ambulances will be the responsibility of the county, that county will have ambulances. Misinformation. Downtown, is that to scare somebody? Do you think the county is going to keep the fire department downtown? Misinformation. Committee that has been shy at numerous times this season with a document, an email that somebody passed out, which is fine, open records, no problem. If you recall, at the last council meeting, Mr. Mayor, the discussion of the fire districts came up, and you personally challenged Mr. Wood, city manager, to come back with a five and ten-year plan, which he acknowledged. Mr. Cummings graciously offered my services as a volunteer, volunteer to be on that task force, not a committee, a task force. A moment later, Mr. Goodland said, hey, I'll volunteer. That was not a committee, it was volunteer to fact find, develop, and look into a five and ten-year plan. Misinformation again. Now, this tooth fairy issue, I'm more than willing to challenge Mr., and you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Cummings. I do not have a filling in my mouth. The issue, and this is a beauty, oh man, I love this one, the grandfather. Guess what? I'll just say this, number one, it's probably illegal for the county to grandfather our citizens an opportunity to stay in. Secondly, if I lived in the county and I'm a senior, and I find out that the grandfathers living in Canton got an exempt from the county, and I'm paying county taxes for a fire department, do you think they've got a problem with Bobo? So, let's, we're playing these games. We have seriously looked at, believe it or not, two and a half years of discussion. It is a hard question, it's not easy to answer, I'm sorry, keep looking, Mayor. The fact is, we have failed over these years to look ahead. There was a point made earlier, about two million dollars, that is absolutely right. There is land up there for the station, absolutely right. We have two super fantastic police cars, each worth a million dollars, because that two million dollars bought those cars. Now, what is equipped on it, I don't know, but they got to be beauties, and I think everybody should take a look at them. That's where I find one, anyway. Now, you know, tonight, we're faced with some tough decisions, and I've heard excellent presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
It boils down to politics and firefighters. Firefighters are going to come to a fire, no matter where it's at, if they can help, because they're brothers, kindred brothers. Politicians, on the other hand, really shaky. Now, I've heard from my daddy many years ago, politician worries about the next election. A statesman worries about the next generation. I would rather be a short-term statesman than a long-term politician. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I will agree, there's been a great deal of misinformation with that point only. After all the committees or task force, whatever you choose to call, we still do not have a good definitive specific plan. When you vote or have a decision, sometimes, and people in council, and some of you in the audience may know that I'm kind of a bottom-line guy, I like to get government and let's move on, that's my background. But in this situation, I have said in many sales meetings that a decision doesn't have to be yes or no, that maybe the best decision is, I don't know, I'm going to have to think about it, or I'm going to have to work it, I'm going to have to do something else, but I'm not making a decision right now. There's been a great deal of misinformation. Some of the committees, some of the committees were so organized that they had one goal in mind, build a pro, build options that made the decision only one way, merge with the city, I mean, merge with the county. We didn't think about creative ideas, and then here we come up, tonight, Mr. Mayor, tonight is the first time I heard about the county possibly allowing us to join them with the exemption. And, Mr. Mayor, everybody's supposed to be included.
That's, that information just came this afternoon.
That's right, we should be included, the council should be included, Mr. Cummings was included.
I believe you were notified of that this afternoon, that I mentioned that while you and Bearisford were.
After the fact.
Was in the audience, about an hour after the fact.
After the fact.
We were invited by the county, we did not set the meeting up and didn't intend to, the county invited, invited us over, Mr. Cummings was, was the chairman of that fire service committee.
That's right.
Mr. Cummings, myself, and Mr., Mr.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I got the floor.
No, you don't either, I've got it right now.
I ain't like that.
Well, I believe you would, go ahead, you finish what you want to say.
Well, I just believe that, right now, we need to step back, as much as I hate to do it, I think we need to step back and not make a decision on this tonight. It is not, it is not a purpose to go out and attack seniors, that is not it. We've got a big problem. If we'd have been addressing this problem three, four years ago, and taking little bites of this all along, we would not be having this discussion. Now, we got this big thing, we're looking for a quick fix. The quick fix means giving away all the things that you citizens have paid for. We paid for the buildings, we paid for fire engines, and now we talking about giving things away to the county, that's not, we got, we, we just got other things that we need to think about, and I'm sorry, I would love to vote and get this thing off the table right now, I sure would.
Mr. Rush?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one thing I would like to clarify is that we're voting on the creation of a fire district. We're not voting on imposing any particular tax. The tax, if it's going to be imposed, would be, would be done at a later date after proper analysis is made. The fact that the fire district here only gives us the opportunity to do that if we so choose. If we look at the numbers and we say it's not convenient, then we could, the fire district would be relatively irrelevant, except if we merge with the county, they would make us part of their fire district. That's, so I don't think this, the creation of a fire district doesn't do anything to change the tax structure, it just gives us the potential.
What do you need us for then?
Couple contradictions. Mr. Beresford suggested it was not a committee. There are all sorts of emails, starting on July 6th, where I stand to be corrected, but I've got in front of me where you, Mr. Mayor, not only made it an official committee, you added me to that committee and instructed Mr. Wood to treat it as a committee with open meetings. That was on July 6th, which was the day after the meeting. So there was an official committee, with Mr. Beresford heading up that committee, and should have been held, any discussion should have been held. Now, I can understand that the meeting that was held the following Monday may have been held because of a time lapse, but there was continued meeting after that, as late as this Monday, ignoring all of those emails making a committee. In fact, I have in my hands an apology from Mr. Wood for not having read that particular email in, in a timely fashion due to his involvement in budgets, but it went to every one of us here, Mr. Beresford included.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
The other thing with Mr. Huffman, I will tell you, the first time I knew about the grandfather clause was today, and, so, there was no way to communicate it before. I was not even going to bring that up today, had Mr. Rush not mentioned that they were equal, it wasn't on my.
Why wouldn't you bring it up?
Because it should have been done, no?
Mr. Beresford, go ahead.
In my understanding of the council and the powers that you have, Mr. Mayor, you appoint committees, and you have that right to appoint committees. What you appointed Thursday night, the fifth, was that you challenged Mr. Wood to do the five to ten-year plan. Mr. Cummings graciously threw me in as a volunteer, not a committee. So let's get off the committee stuff. I said, okay. Mr. Goodland said, I'll volunteer, he didn't say, give me a committee, he said, I'll volunteer. So we have two volunteers, and we have all the right in the world. Now, the next day, on the Friday the sixth, you started thinking about it, and you go, whoops, I left Mr. Cummings on. So you said, we'll make it, and you made it a committee on Friday, not in the council. In the council, when you make a committee, we sit here and agree. And when you came up and made a committee, ah-huh, uh-uh, we are still have the right to go and talk with our city manager, and come up with numbers and points, and this committee thing that we keep hearing about, you know, we're here to try to do good for these citizens. And by golly, I say, yeah, I helped, and we came up with a plan, and it's not fine-tuned yet, and we are working on it. And it's an excellent point that Mr. Rush pointed out, this fire district vote, this ordinance, is to establish a fire district ordinance, it does not have a tax attached to it yet. So, I said, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I said, yeah. I call the question. What's the problem, Mr. Mayor?
I wish I could.
I have, I have, haven't recognized anyone at this point to do that, so, I want to, I just want to mention a couple of things myself.
I had the floor and I was talking.
All right. That was proper issues, though, I believe.
It was not, it was fire district.
I'm going to mention this, either before or after the vote, let's talk, if we want to go ahead and vote, let's vote, okay?
Go order.
Then I will do this at that time. We have a motion in second that we approve the fire district.
Motion in second to vote immediately.
Okay, vote, just vote immediately. Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those no?
No.
Mr. Carriage, we vote now on the motion that Mr. Cummings made, and Mr. Harrisford, second?
No.
You say, I apologize.
Mr. Cummings appreciates you doing that.
Okay. All right, those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Roll call.
Roll call.
We'll do a roll call, okay. Jack? Yes? Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Beresford?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant? Okay. Mr. Carriage? Okay, before we, before we begin the next round, I want to mention a couple of things here, that I think that may be pertinent to this, in fact, I think it is pertinent to that. The, I have contacted the attorney for the Georgia Municipal Association, as well as the attorney for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, a person who I've known for quite a number of years. Both of them had basically the same opinion. The question I asked was whether or not you could establish a fire district in, say, September of 2012, and collect taxes on that district in October of 2012. Well, the, the answer came back, it says, it depends on how you design the district. Letty, if you levy a fee for fire services per parcel, per building, whatever, within the district, it could be effective in the following month or as soon as possible. However, levying a property tax for a fire services based on the value of property would be problematic, since property taxes are levied as of the first day of the calendar year. His opinion is, you could not start this, even if it's approved, until January 1st, at which time it would attach to that. So another, another opinion from the Georgia Municipal Association indicated that if you had a homestead exemption that exempted the taxes, Advalore's taxes, totally, it was, would be highly unlikely that you could legally bypass that simply by setting up a tax district. Where you would have, like, you have police over here, you're paying for, with an exemption, you got fire over here, you're not paying with it, and there's no exemption on it. Now, if you look at the referendum, it says here very clearly, each resident of the city of Canton who is a senior citizen, or who is disabled, is granted an exemption on that person's homestead from all city of Canton, Advalore, and taxes for municipal purposes in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars of the assessed value of the homestead. The value of property in excess of such exempted amount shall remain subject to the taxation. To me, it's very clear that seniors would be exempt from all taxation on that homestead. I don't see how you can interpret this any other way.
I voted, I voted for the district to be established. We expect that Mayor Hargood will veto that, which we expected, and that gives us the time to talk about some of the issues, just like the mayor has just read, which has not been conveyed totally to the entire council. That shows that there's still information out there, point of order, that we are not fully aware of all the information.
Point of order, a question was called on debate and discussion of this topic, it was voted on to end all discussion and debate. Mr. Huffman, respectfully, please discontinue any discussion or debate.
You, you ask me to interject, you interject when I think something's going wrong, the mayor talked.
I did.
The mayor talked after the motion.
I did, I did to do that, and I'll.
Either he can't talk, or everybody gets to talk. Your point of order is actually right, but it came to.
We got the audience here that wants to hear this and step in.
Thank you, Council. So, I guess I kind of lost my train of thought here, is that, I'd like to just to repeat myself, is that we expect the mayor to veto, we understand.
We understand that the mayor is then required in 10 days to give us in writing why it is vetoed and the information to go along with it. But by reading this information, that we, as the council members, and you as citizens, we're not aware of all this information. How can we make good judgmental decisions when we don't have all the information?
You should have voted no. You should have voted no, not yes or no. That's wrong.
We're gonna be moving to another item. If you would like, we can take a couple of minutes. If you want to leave, we'll be going on the rest of the day. If you're lucky to stay, that's pretty legit.
Are you leaving? Are you leaving?
Way back, you say, up here.
Well, I asked you to bring your...
Mr. Huffman?
Okay.
Rodney's... That's Rodney. That's Rodney. That's Rodney. Jen's... What? I see, I hope you said that.
What?
I was identifying that.
Had that been...
Yeah.
Okay. Got everybody back here, so let's go back in session here. Item E, discussion and possible approval to seek master plan, plan, design services for Heritage Park. I've mentioned this a couple of times, I would like to see us authorize the city manager to begin looking into finding some planner to design and kind of look at and make recommendations as far as utilization of Heritage Park. I think we need to get a master plan for it and slowly work towards that over the next few years. Anybody else wanna do that, or just begin?
We're not going here for anybody.
Mr. Barrisford, strike.
I moved that the city manager come back with something that would allow us to develop a master plan design.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions?
My concern, Mr. Mayor, is that this might be premature until Etowah Park is completed. Until we know everything that's in there, what we have, I think trying to do a master plan for Heritage Park might have a duplication of efforts. So I have no objection to the master plan, but I think we should wait until the Etowah Park is well underway.
I would hope that that person, or Fern, or whomever we could get to do that, would be able to look at both and would know what was going in, what was going in the Etowah River, as well as predicting what might be needed in the Heritage Park as well. I think they could do that and go ahead and develop a plan. But I think this motion is really to ask him, so he would have to get someone, I would assume, and bring that person back in for our approval, so before we did anything else. Is that the word? Okay. Anyone else? All right, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. The next item, I put on here, discussion and possible resolution regarding the T-SLOSS referendum. As you know, a lady spoke earlier about that. I think that, you know, we, as council members and mayor, understand how sales tax can affect the city, and, you know, sometimes positive, sometimes maybe not so positive. But the current proposal, to me, is one that, quite honestly, we don't get a tremendous amount out of it. The county doesn't get a tremendous amount out of it. We are indeed a donor county here, which means we will be pumping more money out than we're actually getting back, okay? I think that, you know, it too, in my opinion, would diminish the possibilities of our approval of another sales tax, should that come about in the near future. If we have another penny added on, it's gonna reduce the likelihood that voters are gonna come back and do that. So I've just entertained your discussion, I just wanna hear from you, I mean, it's a lot more, yeah.
I'm a little bit confused in your comment about us being a donor county, because according to, if I'm correct, according to Mr. Aaron's, Cherokee gets back something like 96% or 97% of the monies that are anticipated from Cherokee.
So that's less than we...
Well, that's less, but it's only 30%.
So I sound a donor?
Yeah, I guess that's, you could qualify right there, but I just wondered.
Yeah. And the two big, the only two projects really Cherokee counting, is 140 and the bridge over the little river, I believe, on that. Mr. Bryan?
I'd like to make one comment. Personally, I'm opposed to the T-SLOSS, I'll just tell everybody that, I'm gonna vote against it. But I'm not sure if it's our place as a city to be discussing it, passing a resolution or not, because there's a lot of people that don't really like the council, especially right now, so we, you know, so I'm not sure if we need to pass a resolution or not, but just because I just don't know why we're having a discussion about this at the city council.
Well, I think there are citizens that look to us, and I've had numerous questions personally, one-on-one, unfortunately, I think it's okay about what I think about, you know? And quite honestly, I think it's way too heavy on transit and far too light on roads, personally. But I just put it on here so that this council would have the opportunity to discuss it, and voice their opinion if they chose. If they choose not to, that's fine, too. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
From my calculations, City of Canton normally on 1% gets around $2 million a year. Stand and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wood, but I think it's about $2 million a year from normal sales tax. And according to the information I got, this 1% T-SLOSS will generate about $400,000 to the City of Canton. Now, I don't sort of equate that 1% of that 1.6 million as going someplace else, I don't know where, but from the standpoint of Canton, we're only gonna get $400,000, and we have to use it specifically, it's pretty broad, on transportation projects, but I am also against it, Mr. Bryan.
Anyone else?
Do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion.
I made a motion that we have a resolution opposing the T-SLOSS.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote no.
I abstain.
For what reason, may I ask? I mean, is there actually certain reasons?
Because I don't feel it's appropriate motion for us to make a decision.
You can say it under those circumstances. Boy, that's hard. Can you just not vote?
You can just not vote if you can, as a yes.
I would, just so everyone can call it.
Okay.
No problem.
Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote no. You're voting no?
Not voting.
Not voting, Council, there's a score of... Okay, all members voting for the motion. Thank you.
I do have a vote for the motion. Did you vote no?
Yes, he, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question, legal counsel, isn't the non-voting a significant, it's the same as a yes vote? So a non-vote is...
You save your time, because we play games, we're gonna go home. All right. I mean, you guys are getting silly.
Proceed. Next item on the agenda, update on Etowah River Park. Mr. Barrisford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For these of council, I would ask that Mr. Joe B. West would come up and give us an update, because he has been working on the water, the sewer, part of the plans, before we can actually start really getting out and doing bids, we had to come up with what would be appropriate for that park, and he's on top of it, so he is also a professional engineer, which we've heard about various ones. Is it okay with the council?
Come on up, Joe.
Thank you both, Mayor, Council. Mr. Barrisford, I'd actually come up and give you guys an update on what's going on out at Etowah River Park. We've got, last week, we got a set of revised plans, eliminating a lot of the options. The plans are 30% complete, they've also had a set of plans drafted that are about 30% complete for the Killian Park as well. I have copies in my office, you guys wanna come by and look at it, and be certainly fine. They're progressing right along, working toward the base bid items, and we're, from my opinion, they're gonna itemize the options, the bridge across the river, and the other options, and when we get the base bid, they're gonna build them out, and we're gonna see what we can afford with the money they're gonna allocate them.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah.
I just wanted to thank Mr. West for his studying these plans, because he did save us money. As far as fire hydrants are concerned, we're going to the chief of fire department, and also on the sewer plants, and we had manholes scattered across the park and stuff, and we were able to cut down on the number of fire hydrants and manholes, and I wanna thank him for his work on the project.
Mr. Wood had a question, I believe, but he'll be...
I'll brag on him, too. I can tell you, he's had a lot of weekend work, and we owe him some time off whenever he gets caught up.
But not until...
Yeah. He might be applying to that senior exemption before you get him. But I was gonna mention in my report, Joe B., but why don't you just go ahead and mention the public application, and in case the mayor council gets any phone calls about the need to interrupt water services as a result of the north main, or those concrete projects?
I would, we're have issued a, let me back up, our contractor's ready to tie in the new water lines. I'll say you guys made the right choice by allowing us to go ahead and replace those, that would be very good to see. They're being held in four different places, one is down at the railroad, and one's at Riverdale, and one is up near our fire station, and one is at West Main. The contractor's been working diligently, we've tried to come up with a plan to keep as few people out of water for the minimum amount of time as possible. We think we're gonna begin construction on isolating portions of those lines and tying making the four tines of money. So what that's gonna do is put several people out of business, I mean, out of water, reboil on our businesses, five favorite businesses, the Muggaga Homes in the Riverdale Circle area. They have been notified, when the water service is restored, everything's tied in, through all their water, until we can confirm no contamination.
How long will they be out of service, Steve, to just a few hours?
Per area, I would say a few hours. I'm without any other sane problem. I'm without any unforeseen problems. Now, I will say those are very old lines that we're, some of them are the risk where we're tanning them. But that's out from under the new street space, so I think it's, I think it'll be okay.
Anything else? There was any other question about that? Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Update on the defined benefit plans, Mr. Beresford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The program is moving ahead. We have now put into the hands of our city attorney. The total package is working closely with the group, and that should be moving right along. So I think we're on schedule, and we don't want to rush into anything, but I think we're where we need to be.
Mr. Kanner?
In our last meeting with Mr. Beresford yourself, the city manager and representatives from One American, the local representative broker, I was charged with creating a list of questions and concerns from the documents, and I agreed to send these to Ms. Ross, copying the mayor and the city manager and Mr. Beresford. That list will go out tomorrow. So you'll have a copy of all the questions relative to fees, charges, et cetera, that are being placed in this benefit plan and any other concerns that I have from having reviewed it. It'll be sent out email to those respective parties tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Under new business, city managers report? Yeah, Joe, you covered the water disconnect issue. I'll cover, Mr. Russ Horn, let me speak to that right quick. Because I understood the question to be occasions when we have worked on customer side of meter. And of course, as I've told each of you earlier, that's unusual. It does happen. I don't keep a running record of those events. They are unusual, but they do happen. When the question was posed recently, I guess at the last meeting, I asked Mr. Ingram to call Ms. Floyd or the downstairs staff and also, I think, Brady Curl. I think he did so. The two incidences that came back to me were, as I have reported to council, I think, computed at the budget meeting and then at the pre-meeting this evening as well. Mr. Russ presented us with a copy of a bill where Mr. Goodwin was reimbursed for plumbing repairs to his house in the amount of $390.13. I guess that's what Mr. Russ was driving at. I didn't really, didn't know and frankly hadn't thought before about this. I don't know how many of you remember what was going, this was in September last year. I don't know how many of you remember what was happening in September last year. But I did. I had no financial director. We were having weekly public meetings up here with the media and council on daily problems. I had constant media inquiries from numerous Atlanta TV stations and Atlanta newspaper and local newspapers. We were meeting with neighborhood groups, Mr. Russ's neighborhood group. We were meeting with Tyler Technologies. We were meeting with water and sewer staff. We were meeting with elected officials. We were meeting literally with scores, if not in fact hundreds of citizens. I can tell you the stacks of disputed water bills that I had to deal with. When Nathan Ingram came on board in October, early October, he was in the mess house, but in September, we had a lot of problems. Mr. Goodwin came to me with this bill. He told me that it was a justifiable reimbursement. We had replaced a main line. Now, I didn't give you, we had replaced a main line up in the Freefield area, and that was done in connection with the paving, I think, prior to the paving up there. But I trust Mr. Goodwin. I didn't question his integrity, and he presented to me it's a justifiable reimbursement, and it was effective.
When that was replaced, when that was replaced, it was given a tremendous amount of pressure. In fact, the speedy router, I think, was the people I called, I just called the plumber in the Yellow Pages because it always happens at the worst time. I was in the shower when all this happened, lost water, running around with soap all over me. So I did call him, and he came quickly and ran a test and said, you know, yes, it is some kind of regulator or something. Now, when Mr. Russ talked, I thought he was talking about a leak. I honestly did not, and that's what I asked him about a while ago. I understand what he's saying is that it was a regulator. Both of them on the other side, I thought, on the other side of the fight. I've had other problems. But what happened on this, not only did it fill this up, it had three times the pressure it was supposed to have because I called and asked the water department, our water department, what it should have, and mine was three times as much. It filled it full of mud, so it couldn't get any water through there. Also, it tore my water heater completely apart, brushed the scene completely down. So I paid the man, and he said, you know, this is ridiculous that you're paying for this. The city caused this. And I said, well, I'm an employee of the city in a way. I said, I represent the city. And he said, well, I don't care who you represent. This is not your fault. It's something that happened because they replaced this main down through here and the lines through here, and it has filled up your, your, anyway, it's filled this up, and so you can't get any water. So I called Mr. Woods and said, you know, hey, this guy's telling you this, should I send this in? He said, you can send an empty bike. So I sent it in. But I want everybody to know that I replaced that water heater. I paid for the whole thing to start with, and I replaced that water heater at no cost to the city, which is three times what the other part is. And I'll be glad if the council thinks I should pay for that. I'll be glad to pay for that. It doesn't matter. I didn't do it in trying to get something to turn out.
Anything else, Mr. Wood?
Yes, I'm, yeah, on that same subject. I also, in 2007, I believe it was, before any of us were on the council, I had a sewer issue where the city sewer system failed and dumped thousands of gallons of raw sewage into one of my houses located at 160 Hill Street. And it took me eight or nine months to get the city to acknowledge that that was their fault. I repaired, it was thousands, what, thousands of dollars? So they reimbursed me for most of that as well. So I think the point of all this is that if Mr. Russ or anybody has any concern, all the records are wide open. Instead of trying to put somebody on the spot by saying, has there ever been any? Go look at it yourself. If you've got time to question somebody's integrity, get downstairs and look at it. We'll give you every piece of paper we got.
Thanks. Anyone else? Have you, do you hear?
I'm good.
No council-induced items, so I don't have anything else to add. Entertaining motion to the adjourn.
I would like for the council to consider, when we do this baseball park, we can drag ERP on the same part here. Aunt Lizzie Dean and all the other kids who are going to play baseball, whether it be softball, baseball, or just mom and dad out there on a Sunday afternoon throwing balls to these children. You know, we're, and it's not our fault per se because the county pushed this back, but I'm going to tell you, they, these kids are, there's over 1,100 of them that are in that organized group, and I'll tell them how many hundreds of them that want to play ball. And I think we should do everything possible, push that opening of that field to the spring of this next year. You know, and so what if they need to put a second crew out there? Let them do it. But, you know, not having a place for these kids to play, not letting them have the tournaments that will bring out a lot of money into this city, motels, hotels, grasslands. In fact, I built the very first one for myself, Lizzie Dean, twenty years ago, and it brought thousands of dollars, but it lets a lot of kids enjoy it. And I just challenge all of you, push, let's open that up in spring next year.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
I have a second. Does it favor aye?